Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
If you could stay standing, we're gonna have a moment of silence, then Pennsylar passed away, longtime member of the IDA, decades, decades has been serving for that group for a long time, so if we could just have a moment of silence, I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. We'll turn it on a chance to review the minutes with promotion.
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All favor. Wonderful, let's jump right into the resolutions for today. First one, EP1 is the annual, I believe, the annual resolution that we do, it is accepting our Swiggle County Department of Dating to be our official tourism promotion agency, it's a state, I believe, they have the state requirements that we guys have the pass through funds to come to us.
In order for us to apply for their matching funds for marketing, they need this official designation and they need it annually as part of our application.
Okay. Any questions? Next, I'll look for motion first. Thank you. Second. Morris, thank you. Any discussion?
Great. My question is just broad, why are we allowing the use of Roundup if we want tourism, big strays of dead stuff? Actually, it was sprayed all around the bridges at Paulbrook, which I feel the DEC might need to know about that. It is illegal in all of the developed European nations. Doctor Michael Stevens told me it carries $100,000 fine if you try to use it in Canada, but I believe Massana is such a large monster here that we are literally being put at direct risk. And I can't imagine why you'd wanna spray a huge strip of it along the roadway and promote tourism. It looks horrifying, that's all I can say about that.
For the record, we didn't do that.
For your portion of speaking.
Well, whoever's doing it should stop.
If it's at Paulbrook, it was the college.
No, it's not the college, it was the town of Swiggle. But it's operated one, it's, I see it on side roads, I see it all over the place.
I think we do, that spraying is something we passed by a legislative law, that not for this, maybe obviously, but I believe, I mean, I know we talked about the past when you're not, we should, the contract, right, to fund most of the spraying, so that would fund the contract.
We spray Roundup in this town a lot.
Right. But I think that that's by contract, isn't it, it's happened in the past.
We contract, probably contracted in this town. But we could, you know, always, but if that's the case.
It's a known person, it sounds.
Thank you. We look, we're good. That's on, oh no, to vote, sorry. Any further discussion? All favor. All right, jumping into the second one. Our second resolution, this may look familiar, we kind of are dumbness, it did not go to the floor, so we're gonna bring it back forward today, this is the funding side of the agreement, our partnership between the IDA and the county to fund Center State CEO to do kind of our follow up, make sure this living document that we've talked about for a couple of years now, since 2017, comes to fruition and really grows and shows the proof that we're holding. So, I'm gonna look for motion on this, and I believe, have we done this resolution exactly before, Phil, or something similar, or?
What happened last year is committee approved the contract, approved entering into an agreement, and, but we never received the agreement from the other entities.
This is for the number side of the funding side. Okay, I'll look for motion. Morris, thank you. Second, all, thank you. Discussion?
Can we ever eliminate the IDA, how it's Center State CEO?
I think that's a discussion for budgets, it's something to go on forward, legislative going out, any recommendations you can, I would say though, if there's a, you know, there's a concern that you have specifically.
I have so many, I don't know if we would have enough.
So, just to clarify, we had partnered on the development of the economic development strategy to share the cost, and this was to help implement a lot of the recommendations that were in the plan, so, since we shared the cost on developing the plan, we thought it'd be prudent to share the cost on moving it forward. So, the IDA really, with respect to this item, is only helping us pay the expenses. That's their extent of their involvement.
I just wanna say, it seems to me that the IDA has a tremendous amount of power, and one example of that power, and I really would like this on the record, is Site Energy, that has, do these pilots just ride into infinity with businesses that change? Legal corporations, they are trading gas on the open market, making a fortune, they have never paid a full ticket for taxes from the onset, from the first shovel pull to now, and it has changed hands so many times, which, if I get five minutes, I will look up the change of guard, it is nothing short of astonishing. And I wanna know from Rich or someone, the legal end event, that we're giving these Infinity pilots to corporations making huge money? And are they supposed to go for 25, 35, 40 years? I thought a pilot was like 10 years, got you on your feet, you're off and running. But that doesn't seem to be the case. It seems to be a huge giveaway, willy-nilly for how well you get along with them, I have no idea. It's purely my opinion.
That's not true.
Bad business.
That's not true.
Well, site is for sure, it's a sure thing.
Yes, site is for sure, companies, we carry the pilot for the original company, then the new company comes in and asks for a pilot to continue doing what they're doing.
They're changing two or three times a year, you know that. They're being sold on the open market repeatedly.
Let's do this, let me take it over, actually, we do have the chairman of the IDA here, this is the board, Mr. Vogt, would you want to respond at least maybe to that specific situation, if you're knowledgeable, otherwise we can put it together and maybe follow up.
First of all, this is a first I've heard, you know, and I'd love to speak to you about issues with the IDA, because if there's issues with it, I wanna hear it. Secondly, every time we enter into a pilot, we have to contact all three taxing authorities, the county, the school district that's part of it, and the municipality. They come to a public hearing, they can respond either public, you know, at the hearing, by letter, by anything, if there's a problem with it. Recently, we had a pilot that the town of Richland had an issue with, we modified the pilot because of their issues, and so, we're open to hear, to anything. And if there's, you know, if we don't hear issues or concerns from any of the taxing authorities after they receive the letter and are invited to a public hearing, either to sit and speak or by written comment, then we assume, and I guess that's a poor word, choice of words, but then we figure that obviously the taxing authorities don't have an issue with what we're doing. Now, site, yes, the pilot was put on before I was part of the IDA, but the one thing about that plant that we have to take into consideration is a tremendous impact they had as far as construction, service, maintenance, employees, everything. I mean, it's, it's part of it, you know, like with Novellus and a lot of companies that we sit down and talk with, it goes beyond just a pilot, it's the economic impact that they put into it in addition to taxes. I know, speaking as a tradesman, we had 300 carpenters working there, building that plant, we still have outages, we still have mill rights working there, electricians, everybody going in, and they use the Swiggle County residents mostly to service that plant.
I understand that, but how long, it just goes forever then? They're gonna be granted a pilot for?
No, there's a term for it.
It was just renewed for another 25 years.
And this is what I'd like to talk to you, instead of taking the committee's time, I'd love to sit down and talk with you about this, and maybe, you know, you can educate me on some of the concerns.
Well, I mean, I love to turn off the committee's time on this one, it's way too important.
I think it looks good.
I'm not on the IDA, but I believe that in order to extend, there has to be some kind of economic activity by the company, so, like, for example, say you had 50 room hotel and a 20-year pilot, and you're in year 15, and you wanted to add 50 more rooms to your hotel, they would probably take that pilot and extend it some more years to take into account this new investment that you were making on that project. That's my recollection of how pilots get extended. I don't know the story on site, why that happened, but.
Maybe, in this, right, and I completely, you have every right to ask any questions you'd like to, would you, would you prefer to potentially maybe talk to them offline, and maybe we could have Mike, when he is here next month, give a presentation, or maybe we could have a little question and answer.
I'd just like to see the numbers, how it was re-upped, it was in the, it was in the newsletter, or whatever that is, but it's changed hands, and I will find out several times.
I think that information's all public, we can absolutely get that already, so if we, Gary, if you want, maybe just hold up for free, and we'll get that information, and if you would like it on the record for next month, feel free, we can give the agenda.
And I'm all for the building trades, my father was head of the building trades, I absolutely want local construction and local contractors.
Yeah, and if there's a newsletter stating this information, I'd love to see that newsletter too.
Yeah.
Okay, it must be something that, you know, we didn't get, or I missed.
Gary, this is made supplier, right now from Novellus, site is made supplier for Novellus, and as you all know, they've expanded, and they continue to expand, so, we gotta be careful with, you know, these are things that come up, and you should know.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, again, I'd be very happy to have all the follow up next month, if you want to have something, and we can talk about, these are very important things, and, you know, we could have a number of newer legislators, and I don't think it's a bad idea, give a little pilots, I'll say dummies with talent for legislators, kind of just, it's important information, it is, you know, we all need to understand this, that's a good question. If not, in specific resolution, I think we have a first and second, I'll look for a vote, all favor? Any votes? Thank you. All right, moving on to EP3, one we kinda like, if you're wondering, the state is giving us more money, Dave, I believe, actually, this is not found money, but this is additional money that we expect, correct?
It's money that we expect annually, they, the state changed the formula that they use to calculate how much we have earned, and this is the first time they changed formula, and I have recollection, I don't know if you, or basically, this is to make up for a period once the formula changed, over that period, we have earned some extra money based on the formula, so, regrettably, they're sending that money to us.
It always seems like when they regrettably change things, it goes the other direction, you see, it's actually getting money.
Yeah.
That's exciting. All right, give me the promotion on that. Roy, thank you, second, all thinking, any discussion? Dave, anything more you wanna share with that, or do you feel like that's, I think we've talked about this. Great, I'll look for vote, all favor? Any votes? And our final resolution today, this is an annual resolution, as we all know, it's Swiggle County has the best stonefield trails, and it's a resolution that we put forward. Thank you, right, second. All thinking. Any discussion?
Just, the committee's clear, this doesn't have to go on the floor, it's just approval of the committee to lease these properties. It's basically abandoned round beds, insertments, stone gale areas that the county still owns, and so, we'll get a bunch of them.
Dave, is there anything new this year that wasn't in last year's contract? All favor? Any votes? Thank you. All right, let's jump down to our update stage, if you want to pick us off.
Yeah, so, the last month or so, since we've spoken, we've been pretty much consumed by a whole new job that the state gave us to administer the ready program for, prepare for the application of those funds. You may remember that originally, the governor announced 300 million to help fortify the shoreline and prepare things that had been caused by high water levels on Lake Ontario. That was in June, shortly thereafter, they carved out 20 million of that 300 to go for private homeowners, because they had experienced a significant amount of damage as well. That program will start sometime very soon, we're still waiting on the final rules, it will be administered by the neighbors of Watertown, like it was in 2017. We just don't know the parameters of the program, we got kickers caps, what they're gonna allow, they're not gonna allow, it's all come together very quickly. So, shortly after that, at some unknown time, they took out another 160 million from the 300 million, and put it into a pot that they call regional significant projects, where we really shouldn't even definition of regional significant, but we kind of made assumption based on the language that they used to say anything that has an economic impact that extends beyond a particular community. So, do the math, 300 minus 20 minus 160 leaves 120, that then could be used for all eight counties along the lake shore and St. Lawrence River. And there was a couple of ways that they could've divided that out, like a per mile dollar amount, which would then be equitable, but instead, they said each county can get up to 15 million dollars. So, we had in Swiggle and Pew County, the region that they established for us, about 100 projects that were submitted, some were just not eligible from the start because of the nature of the project, and some of those were Pew County small, maybe like 25% or so, Pew County. So, our challenge over the last two months was to try to prioritize those, and due that, we separated what we thought were regionally significant, and asked that they be put into that 160 million dollar pot, so that we could have full use of 12 million or 15 million for local projects. We also, in concert with the other counties across the lake, made the suggestion that marinas by their nature on Lake Ontario are regional, it's not uncommon for charter captains to start early spring in Niagara County, and then move east as the salmon move east over the course of the season. It's not uncommon for someone to leave a marina in one county and end up taking their customers to a county or two counties away, because that happens to be where the fish are, given the conditions of that day. So, all the counties got together and said, be like, all the marina projects to be considered under the regional pot of money, so that allows us to focus on other regional things. So, had we not done that, we have close to 14 million dollars worth of marina projects in this Swiggle County alone, so there wouldn't have been any money left for anything else if we had carved those out. They haven't confirmed that that is how they're gonna be treated, but conversations lead me to believe that it's high on their list of considerations, just haven't set positively yet that all the marinas are gonna be in the region. So, now we're down to 12 million, and that's divided amongst eligible projects within each of the towns along the lake shore. So, the county has a couple of projects, Camp Palace, we're trying to get the bluff stabilized, prevent the septic system from being compromised sometime in the future. There's a nature park called Independence Nature Park, that's basically boardwalks and trails through a wetland area, we're trying to get that raised up basically, compensate for higher water levels from the lake. It's not being washed over by waves, but because it's adjacent to the lake, like a lot of Deer Creek Marsh and a lot of the other ones, the water table has risen, and now these wetland marsh areas are flooding over onto private boats and camps, in this case, of nature park. We have a project on County Route 89, which is the road where Wynn uses, and it goes from the city line, excuse me, college boundary out to West Creek Bridge, that replaces some culverts and fortifies the roadside, and raises up so that it won't be damaged in the future. So, the main criteria for the governor's program was, take your property, fortify it, raise it, whatever you need to do, so that it will be at least one risk in the future, so they don't have to come back with 100 million every year to make repairs, and demonstrate that in some way it has immunity or economic impact. Those are the first, like, high level criteria that we use to prioritize all projects. Swiggle Town has a few projects in there, wastewater primarily. Seabryla has a project Sunset Bay Park, which is an extraction point for when we have to evacuate Lake Ontario in case of emergencies. Sunset Bay Park and Seabryla is one of the places where emergency responders would be bringing those people in off the lake, they need some work on their boat launch and break wall. Town of New Haven has a marina project that they identified as a priority. Town of Mexico has three marina projects, and Mexico Point State Park is state land that is leased by the town, operated like a town park, but it's owned by the state, and it's very important to them, there's a store, as well as natural resources there that draw a lot of people, so they ask for that to be their priority, and likely, the state probably will pay the local match there because it is their property. Mexico, Town of Richland has a couple of projects, Marina and the end of County Route 5 in Fort Ontario, there's some work that needs to be done there. Sandy Pond has a lot of marinas that are in the regional pot, and also, their real problem is wastewater compromising, very low water table, high water table they have there, and that project by itself is like 50 million dollars. So, there wasn't any way to actually help them solve that problem, but we've asked the state to consider an allotment to help move their engineering process to a point where there'll be ready supply for the wastewater grants, because they could help pay for that. So, these are all recommendations from the committee, which is myself, supervisors from this town, and Janet was put on there by the state for the tourism impact, my planning staff, Jameson, technical issues, chairman, brother up, Phil, and then try to keep the various legislators of those towns informed as we go forward. We have another meeting sometime this week, we don't know when yet, United Committee, they'll be in a public meeting next week to bring everybody up to speed, and then, final recommendation has to be submitted to the state by September 16th. So, we're ready.
Are there any Democrats on your committee?
I don't personally know people's registrations, and they'll select the people for the group, everybody was appointed by the state. We have the commissioner of Department of Transportation, appointed by the governor to this group, the commissioner of Office General Services, appointed by the governor, and somewhat related, regional, the state, Richard, Douglas, Rich Valley Deacon.
I'm just saying, on your vote, committee, so it was all appointed by the state, every single appointment?
Yeah. And basically, they, they did the same thing everywhere, they took the legislator, supervisor, chief elected official from the municipality, so mayor, and state, or state, you know, here is chief elected official in Phillips Towns, County, on a lake shore.
How many linear miles of water pumps?
Around 40.
Boy, it seems like money's burned off already.
Yeah, there is, even after taking the marinas out, in that 14 million, there's, we're over 14, or over 15 on the other side, so we're paring those down, doing the best we can to get into that budget.
So, people lost homes and everything else?
They'll fall into that 20 million dollar pot that's administered by neighbors of Watertown.
That's the nation, the entire shore, I think, correct, that's the nation?
Yeah.
That's 20 million for a town?
Yeah, and I saw a guidance this morning, that it's only for the primary residents, it's gonna be some kind of, yeah.
Some really, Pat, it's maybe they'll be able to get half the price taken.
That's an issue that's been brought up, it's, it's happened.
Are water levels gonna be reduced?
The AGC has, the outflows still at 1,003, which is like a 3% reduction over the maximum they did. I did contact them and ask them if they have a target level for Lake Ontario they're trying to reach, and they said, no, they can't operate that way, because they get control of it in, I'm hoping, I have heard that, I've met with the Perian group, they'd like to see it go down to 244 by November, December, I don't know if they're gonna make it, it's gonna depend on the amount of water in the system that the AGC keeps, whoa, gonna have us.
It's all at the Samuel B. Moses Gut Dam, where they're making millions of dollars a day, hydroelectric power. So, you know the depth of the lake right now? 250 was the disaster number.
I think it's about 2, best I've seen, 247, it's far down there. They've reduced the flows at the dam twice already, so, but it's still, they've reduced the flow because the waters come down, and you have, that increases the current, because it's going through a mirror where the bassage, which you decrease the width of the river when water comes down, the water flows faster, which is smaller tube, like, push water tight, faster it goes, so they're maintaining that current level, and still a little bit above what commercial shipping considers a safe, safer.
The flow rate into Ontario would slow down too, because of the flow's dropped, which I haven't checked right now. This is the time to go, we've fallen.
Andrew, did you have anything else? Okay, thank you for the science lesson there, Phil, I appreciate it, Roy, go ahead.
So, you're saying there's really only two pots of money for all of us?
There's, there's three, the one for residential opponents, one that they call significant regional, and one that's basically public.
And you said that there was, you mentioned a local management system?
15%.
And that's on both of them? Or all, all three of these pots?
We don't know the rules for the private, the 20 million dollars yet. We don't know the rules for the private, the twenty million dollars yet, but for the other two, yes, fifteen percent.
How, where are the county, county roads that were damaged?
They would be in twelve to five, or fifteen, so for example.
How do we apply that?
Well, the local group each, the state divided the Lake Shore, St. Lawrence, and the five regional groups. Agri and Orleans Townies will put together, Beuda and Swigaw will put together. And then Wayne, Montgo, and Jefferson and St. Lawrence will put together. So the each of the regional groups has gone through this exercise and conversations and analysis engineering inspections, prioritization. And by mid-September, each group will submit to the state-ready commission their request for assistance. And there's no guarantee that what you ask for is what you're going to get. You hope that you did your job right and you'll get something close to that, but we don't really know what will be funded and what won't be.
So more year-round, officially year-round residents? Or what, is there water and stuff?
As this program is defined, this particular program is defined, there is not an identified source of receipts.
What would those insurance companies?
And that was brought up, multiplied by leadership, our county, that has an important focus.
But they're here, they're here in every region, so who knows what's happening?
Yeah, I've gone to three of the public meetings. I'm pretty disappointed in the attitude. It's, I know these are political things, it's starting to really recome, the backpedaling. Thank you for doing such a good job. There's literally no decision makers on the state's commission. The weak individuals, they have no answers, they've been asked the same question time and time again. They know nothing about any reversals for people that have spent money yet, they have no, no, no answer. We, they have no answer and they've been asked several times, I've heard a couple of times, if in-kind services can be used, if are fifty percent. So it's, it's a little disappointing. Their political pockets, unfortunately, I would have been nice to ask the decision maker to turn the commission, but I don't see them.
I'm especially disappointed with Mitch McConnell on a federal level for failing to seek the IGC in a timely manner and causing this catastrophe. But I will go home and call the entire food chain of the state and reiterate this verbatim.
Dave, just one question, the monies are coming out from the state. Will they only be administered by the state or the county get a portion of that and then we administer it from the county level, or will strictly be administered in the state?
Well, as you heard that, the rules are pretty muddy and even though we ask a lot of these questions repeatedly, we don't get answers, but it appears that each project will be administered individually by the property owner. So if you're a marina owner, you'll have a contract with the state. A town that's fixing a road, you'll have a project that's on a contract between you and the state.
So we're just sort of trying to facilitate a bunch of capital at county level, but we're not, we're not taking that money dispersing it from the state.
Well, the difficult part's going to be that is we expect these to be reimbursements that these folks are going to be funded in the front. They did discuss that the hope would be there might be some interim funding, so you know, spend some, get some instead of doing the whole million-dollar project. If you're in Canada, you're going to drop a million bucks to get reimbursed, eight hundred fifty grand, it's going to be difficult. So my hope, we've talked about this, my hope is that there was some sort of vehicle set up to help upfront and funding.
Kind of like a construction loan as opposed to go to the work and ask for us, ask us for reimbursement you might get sometime.
If you're in a cell, it's over there, you give me ninety percent, you know, ten million dollars, but where am I going to get it, ten percent, I mean, that's again, where am I going to fund it upfront, it's impossible. So my hope is that they're going to find a common sense way to be able to handle these projects because all the money in the world's not going to help if they have to run it. Again, this is spoken and Dave, these meetings, it has been frustrating. And I think it's frustrating for them as well because, you know, we've been on panels before where you had to answer the question with, I'm not sure, let me look into it or take it under advisement, that's, that's difficult. So I agree with like seeing people who.
I see a one or two meetings, we're coming up to a four or five.
Unfortunately, kind of getting used to that because whether it's the shared services or the tax cap or the ready or the under gains, state over the last several years, they do the big announcement of a new initiative. No rules, no regulations, and they're kind of building it as they go, so you don't know. It's difficult for those trying to participate, to plan how they're going to participate, because you don't know.
Right, um, I think it's something, Dave, thank you. Do you have any final projects or are you not sure of that?
They don't have a timeline as to when the state would respond, one hundred of them before. But county projects, one that we're hoping for, County Route 89 is about three hundred thirty thousand. The nature park, probably fifty to a hundred. Camp Hollis, we don't have an estimate on that yet, but probably one to two hundred thousand. And there's a bridge on County Route 15 that goes to Sandy Island Beach State Park and a number of private residents along that building complex. There's some controversy about whether we own the bridge or the state owns the bridge. We believe we gave that to them when we turned over the park. It may come down to, look at what the cost of this, but it, it needs some work. That could be a couple million dollar project. If those are approved, that's money that the locals share, is going to have to be discussed at some point. But fifteen percent is a pretty good, pretty good grant to get, you know, if I'm any, that are straight loan projects. And or maybe plus that twenty percent.
Has there been any discussion as to how many times the state will give a resident or business money to rebuild when it happens again, and it happens again, and it happens again? I mean, if you're rebuilding a house in the same spot that you just had to put thousands of dollars in and the next year it happens, and now I'm asking for help to build it again, there has to be some point that, you know, we can only give you so many times to fix this house, you can put it in the same place.
That's a really good question because it happens a lot in floodplains, particularly coastal areas where people lose their homes and feel they have flood insurance and they build back and then five years later they get flooded out again and then they build back. So there's been discussion about, you know, how many times should you do that? And when the governor announced this, he said, look, it doesn't make sense for us to every year put out a hundred million dollars to help people fix things and protect their property so it doesn't happen again. And here's three hundred, well, three hundred doesn't go very far, I'm four hundred plus miles of shoreline here. So I don't know the answer to your question, but it's something that he said brought up.
It is, yeah, I was just curious.
All right, maybe I'll see if it's not ready really, because I know that it's been pretty much here.
I didn't sleep.
Okay. Couple of those nights, all right, great, thank you. All right, let's jump out on end here. Yes, I'm sorry, oh, sorry, right, go ahead.
You have an update on the website?
Yeah, most departments have been transferring their material. Understand that there was several thousand pages of content that needed to be edited and then transferred over. That's going pretty well. We expect perhaps a launch in October, November. Right now, we're into trying to get functionality put in there for those people who watch different things. We may launch with some of that not in place, so for example, if you wanted to be able to take payments online for a service or if you wanted to have e-commerce, there's a lot of different functionalities, whether or not those are all in place, we'll be launching. Nation scene, but that's a target priority. Yeah. Yeah, all they have, and it's, so there was a long period of discussion, treasurer's office and their service provider, whether we should have a different one, whether we could get different terms. How do we, where does money go when it comes in? If you're in Youth Bureau and someone goes online to rent Camp Hollis, when they make that payment, does it go right into one big account administered by the treasurer? And then you hope it comes out late afterwards and gets credited to your department? Or do we set up all individual accounts? There's a little bit more to it than just flipping a switch to say, everybody can do this. So, yeah, those are all underway.
Is there any other municipalities that have taken up on the offer of sharing the service of that website?
There's been a few and some like already have a pretty significant website. And what we're trying to be careful is we're not trying to put private providers out of business, but for people who have little or nothing, we want to give them some kind of basic platform to be able to participate. So they're, they're coming along slowly, but it's not a priority, it seems, for some of the towns.
Do you expect to have any sort of funding through the shared services money?
Yeah, if they go out and sign on for, we enter into those agreements during this calendar year, then they'd be, we can add that to the application and here for reversals.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to just skip over Joe if you don't mind, I'm going to jump right over here to update our Swigaw County Economic Advancement Plan. Welcome Andrew Fish, Center State CEO, come on right up here, you're free, sir. As we discussed earlier, that previous resolution, although we are just committing the funding today, not starting, Andrew and his group has been on since, I believe, October of November last year, so why don't you go ahead and kick us off?
Thanks, Andrew, coming to an update. As it seems to me, my frustration with economic development work, every time I get involved with something, it's the pace. You know, everything takes longer than you hope it would. We originally had a prime line of planning what we were calling a Economic Development Plan Summit for this month. And then, as you heard from the excellent report that Dave just gave, you know, we got this thing called Ready dropped on us that has spent, has consumed a tremendous amount of time, you know, and obviously a super important opportunity to pursue those funds to help the shoreline and properties and investments. So that said, there's been a lot of progress made. We've got a course theory committee that has met multiple times. We've got some subgroups that are focusing on really six key areas that we pulled out of that advancement plan and said, hey, these are the highest priorities, let's move on these now. Some really exciting potential projects that could come as a result of that. And our plan is now essentially moved out a month, our goal is to do the summit in October. And the reason we're doing that is twofold, one, some of those projects that are going to come out, obviously are going to require funding opportunities and, you know, we're having some significant conversations at the regional council level about remaining URI funds and how those can be deployed throughout the whole region. You'll recall those that were involved in the process in 2015, it was very metro-centric. It was designed to be something that was built around some of the city hubs for the upstate regions. And so Syracuse had a tremendous influence in that process. But what we're talking about now is there's roughly about a hundred and ninety million of those dollars still uncommitted. How those funds will be strategically invested moving forward, the goal is to have those funds submitted by the end of 2020. And so one of the things that Steve discussed heavily is around the opportunity to give infrastructure shovel-ready investments from an economic development standpoint. So we're keen to be involved in those conversations, trying to queue up some of the recommendations coming out of these committees as it relates to that. There's also some really exciting discussions that are happening, collaborations and working together to, you know, better deliver economic development services in an efficient manner throughout the county, utilizing the resources that we already have, but, you know, creating mechanisms or creating communication channels that can make that really, really be more seamless for the businesses and for the stakeholders. You know, for me, I just got to say it's been an exciting process to see what's happening in Swigaw County, both with the implementation of the DRI in Swigaw and how Paul received the DRI award this year, as well as some of the exciting things that are happening throughout the rest of the county and the towns and the villages. So we are hopeful that what we will have, both at the October evening and after the summit in October, is really a game plan for, okay, here's the implementation steps for 2020, here's how we're going to be able to invest in specific projects. What that may also mean is working with your leadership here, coming with some recommendations for possible funding mechanisms from the county to match certain grant opportunities and what that discussion would look like and how those would be prioritized. And, you know, it's been a great collaboration with the folks at the IDA and Mike and Steve, as well as Dave and his team here, working with the county and cities to kind of put this in place. And so Swigaw's been a good partner at the table as well. Happy to answer any questions, as I said, at the outset, you know, I always in this work, we want it to happen sooner than it is. But at the same time, I feel good about the progress that we've made. And, you know, we're, we're happy to be partners in this process and excited about what's to come.
And I want to personally thank you as well for taking it on. Obviously, a pretty big lift, we had, I think, had been flubbering a little bit, there's certain parts of it we had accepted in as approved, and I think we had started taking up, it's, it's a heavy lift, there's a lot to it. If it was a quick thing, we would have fixed it up. So I want to thank you guys and your folks for putting it all together. I think it's, when we put this out, we said, well, this is going to be a living duck. A lot of times we approve with studies and who knows what happens to it. So it's encouraging for me to see that this is taxpayer money and there's, there's going to be fruit from this, so I'm thinking. Any questions from the folks here?
So of the teams that you set up, how many of them have met their goals and turned in materials to you?
So of the six that we established, the only one that is really not on pace and involved in some of these discussions is the Workhorse Development Collaboration one. We've actually changed tactic on that one a little bit. What we're doing is we're pulling together some of the service providers ourselves and talking about what's out there, what are the gaps, what are the opportunities to advance certain activities? We're also working closely with Carla and with Chena as it relates to the key program, trying to help them establish better connections with the.
Well, that's good, I just would have liked to have been informed of that since you asked me to be the chair.
Yeah.
Well, and from the Fugieco, I recommend Chena and Carla, so I'm glad to talk to you. I mean, a little bit of information back.
Apologies on that, I certainly wish we could communicate a better review. The thoughts that we had around that were for chairs, yourself, you expressed your concern around time and then Chris Todd, who's not at the time as well, kind of led us to kind of change a lot.
Well, and I warned you of that, I'm happy about that you're, that's, there's moving in the right direction. I'm just, as a happy parent person, it's, yeah, I've not heard anything about it, it was pretty disturbing.
We'll, we'll be there in the communications relates to that moving forward for chair. The other five committees that have met is Economic Development Collaboration, Marketing Coordination, the Infrastructure Group, the Placemaking Group, and the Agribusiness and Foodservice. Those five groups have all met. We had two sets of deliverables that we've gotten from, deliverable one has been received from everyone. Two has been received from four out of five groups, but the fifth one we're expecting within the next week or so. And then the summit will be planned in October. And really, deliverable three from each of those groups is taking, the first step was identifying kind of the, what are the opportunities, what are the challenges that we're facing? The second step was really saying, what could be the solutions for these things? How can we, how can we do these things better? And the final thing is specifically, what are the actual names that we're going to do to meet those strategies? So it's kind of a slot.
So in functionality now, Chena and Carla are actually. So, as functionality now, Gina and Carla are actually the team, but you're, somebody in your group is chairing that piece of it to get it done.
Yeah. So, um, that's good. That's really good to know.
And you and Steering Committee, uh, Leadership Committee folks have each of those subcommittees, is that correct?
Correct. There's, there's co-chairs on each of those subcommittees, with the exception of the Workforce Development ones, which we kind of changed the tactic as to how we're implementing that one, um, doing a little bit more of the, the light work and, and coordination ourselves. Um, and then the other five, other five committees have co, have two co-chairs on each of those committees, members of those committees as well. Um, and, and there's been a lot of great involvement, a lot of great discussion, some really exciting projects coming out of a couple of those groups, um, that, that could have some significant impact.
I know a number of folks have asked me, uh, about this study and the background support we've been doing here. It's understandable, uh, it not being just purely, you know, river-focused to cities. And I do wanna thank you another bit for the passionate push to include the North, like, include Phoenix. It's, it's in the other areas, pacing's way in X, Y. And we've got a couple of local superintendents or supervisors to return on some of these work groups as well. So, it really is a push to include everyone, focus on what we've currently done, file, and don't quit. Do any bad or something.
You know, the comment you made earlier about the, the plan, you know, kind of selling. We, we see this all the time where a consulting group will come in and they'll develop this wonderful strategy and say, "Here's all the things we should be doing differently in your activities on a table." And they drop it on a community that already is working at full capacity. You know, you're, you're already working on projects from day to day, let alone things like Ready and other stuff that come along. And so, what ends up happening is you go out dealing with the problem in front of me, not the problem tomorrow or next year. And so, you know, what the role that we're playing here really is just keeping that discussion on the forefront and having those questions be asked and having those answers be, you know, teased out and being informed, um, to really try and answer that. I think all told, between the six committees and the course steering group, there's probably about sixty, uh, sixty-five individuals that are involved in this process right now. They're involved in giving their time and their expertise and, and, you know, so far, we're hearing positive input from folks.
That's great. Can you open up?
Um, the resolution we just passed in the last meeting came from them, right?
Yes.
Yes. You know, tax for, uh, lack one that, that the presentation, uh, at the last meeting, that came from one of the teams.
Absolutely. You have the Agribusiness Group.
Right. Now, you said that at the next EDP meeting or after that, you'd be able to bring some more actual projects of the week?
So, the actual projects will probably come after the summit. Um, so what'll happen at the summit is there'll be kind of a presentation from each of the groups, um, talking about, "Here's the recommendations, here's the, here's the strategies, here's what we wanted to do specifically with this." Right? Not just, uh, it's not the strategy, it's actually the, the, the implementation steps. The, the plan itself had a lot of strategy, like, "Oh, you should, you should do more of this collaboration, even more coordination and things like that." And so, at the summit, each of those groups will present and we're gonna invite a lot of stakeholders to come to that and see that, get some feedback from those that are in attendance there and get some additional prioritization that comes out of that. And so, then it would be following that where we would say, "Here's some of the specific recommendations."
Okay. That's what I was gonna ask, is who, uh, and where would the summit be going?
So, the summit, original plan and, and of course, uh, you know, best of the plans and nice and, and folks. But, um, the original plan was for September nineteenth. We have a, uh, Center State is actually hosting one of our signature networking events at the Board, Board Ontario, um, kind of highlighting the Bush Awards, National Park status and other things. So, we're bringing a lot of our folks here and that's an evening event. So, we were planning the afternoon to do that summit to also invite regional stakeholders to participate, as well as all the folks and we're trying to, uh, we're sure we have a particular network after that. Um, but the timing of that won't work. So, it'll likely be in the afternoon. We'll probably do it at the Conference Center. Um, and so, we've got space to host, you know, a hundred plus people. Um, and it'll probably be a two to three hour session in some afternoon, you know, probably.
Yeah. Um, so, can, uh... Have you communicated with, um, Chris that he's no longer, uh, the, the co-chair? Or can you report, can you give some sort of a report back to us, uh, from whoever's leading the workforce piece, that we took this over, apologies for not, you know, letting you know that you're off the hook and, you know, you're no longer waiting to try to do these without guidance?
Yeah. I'll send any note to you, Chris.
And the ultimate goal then is to really come out of this October summit with a URI ask.
Um, the URI ask will really be specific to certain projects from certain committees. Um, with the workforce piece, honestly, it'll probably be more focused on the workforce development initiative that the state launched. Um, this is their, um, sixty-five million dollar pot of funds that they have.
Oh, okay. Well, I got it.
Workforce, um...
The new, the new pot.
Yeah, which is not URI-specific.
Right.
Um, and, uh, so some of the infrastructure pieces and possibly stuff out of the group, uh, tourism and agribusiness groups would see asks in that regard. Um, and, uh, outside of that, it's just maybe a matter of the specific projects and what funding opportunities that are out there that do line up. Or if it's something that's a significant enough priority and is able to be looked at from a county budgetary perspective, we wanna have those conversations and, you know, whether that's a this year or next year conversation, that's how we would manage that process.
Okay. So, in this report to Chris and I, um, do you also let us know who's queuing this? Who's on whatever workforce development committee you put together?
So, there, there really is not a committee at this point because we weren't able to actually pull the committee together. There wasn't able to, people weren't, people didn't pull together the group that was given in terms of the list.
Well, I never got an email back that you said, you, it was last left to me and you were gonna contact Chris Todd. I had already warned you that you're not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna work out. He's too busy, especially this time of year. And so, to just not hear anything at all was pretty amazing, right?
And I think maybe this is a conversation we can have after this meeting. Do you wanna, do you have a couple of seconds?
I do, and I don't mind having a conversation now. I mean, what I will say is that there were a lot of factors as it related to workforce development. We talked a little bit about that even prior in terms of why we were specifically trying to pull in workers related to the Chairs. We knew that there was a challenge as it related to the timing issue. Um, because we weren't actually able to get the committee together and we still wanted to make some progress. What we did is we moved away from having a full committee as it related to that and just implementing the steps that we would have taken with the committee outside of that through the individual conversations. So, I'm happy to do a, a full report to you and, and to Chris. I'll tell you that I don't even know that Chris even knows it or isn't worried about whether he's your co-chair or not at this right now, because he's got a lot on his plate.
Right. But if he hasn't been informed that it's been taken off of it, it's just nice to give us notice that, okay, initially, we expected to, we had asked to do this. I didn't, I had, and as much as I told you that I didn't have the time to do it, I committed to do it and came to the first meeting. But then I didn't hear anything more, even though I recommended that you should have Gina and Carla as the Chairs. Um, so, you know, I mean, I'm pleased that you got the right people involved, but, um, and if you had a committee, I would've been disappointed if I hadn't been asked, of course, after, you know, after committing to, to, to do that, after all the time. I'm on the advisory board for CCCD now. So, you know, it's really important to me and I was surprised to not hear anything.
Understood.
And, um, any other questions? I do wanna also mention, um, where you've left, but I did wanna mention, you know, you know, the partnership with the IDA that we've been talking about here. Goes obviously Harvey on just pilots and things like that. The, the IDA obviously has partnered with us, that, you know, they are very interested in development and the economic development of this county. And, uh, this really grew out of that relationship that we had with the IDA. And I just wanna make sure I highlighted that, Mr. Todd is on the Oversight Board for this second term. We, the Center State's been together as its own tribe, well, as its stakeholder. We have it as our Chair. So, there is a, it definitely is a partnership. I wanna highlight the fact that I think we're starting to really excellent gains out of this and the direction it's going really well, as you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of, I wanna thank Andrew and Center State for facilitating this. But one of the things they have done is the old saying, you know, "They can buy us a fish," right? But they're teaching us to fish. And by the committees they set up and everything, the Steering Committee nominated a list of maybe eight to ten people for each committee. And it was up to us as a committee to reach out, once we formalized it, to the partners, to schedule meetings and recommend others that we thought would be important. We added a couple of rural communities to the Economic Oversight and Collaboration Committee because we felt we needed an input from maybe some rural areas of the county, not just the cities. And I think they did a wonderful job in just kinda, you know, working at arms length, but making sure that we were on track and doing what we need to do as a committee. And, uh, if there's, if there's something going on with, um, workforce development, you know, maybe that's something that we should be looking at too, you know, because, uh, that's a very important part of the overall economic strategy of Oswego County. So, uh, you know, we're definitely interested in it, Roy. And, you know, even though we're on one committee, we're still a team working together on all of it.
I, I get that. Okay. So, now, if I dial back, if I'm the one that suggested that we create this plan in the first place? Okay. So, I don't know how many years ago we're talking about now. And we've, so we put that together. I was on the team to help, to, to, to work on the plan. And then all of a sudden, there's a Steering Committee that I haven't heard anything from. I don't even know who's on it. And then it's just been, I mean, uh, it'd be nice to know what the hell was going on. Can this, you know, can this, shouldn't the Steering Committee report to us once in a while? Um, it's, it's a lot. It's just, it's, uh, you know, I'm glad that it seems to be working, but I'm just disappointed in the lack of information and follow-through.
Right. Anything else?
And you don't have to stay at your class.
I'll follow up with you, uh, there, there's some background that I think you've worked with and how to share that.
Yeah. All right. Wonderful. Anybody else? Thank you, Andrew. I appreciate it. And so, you are free to go if you'd like, sir. All right. Let's go hang out for our excellent Soil and Water.
I, I will take the opportunity to leave.
All right. Stay here. Joe, welcome.
Thanks. I just have a, uh, a few objectives for Soil and Water programming this summer. Um, definitely an active field to use for sure. Um, so we have, uh, we have several different programs that, that we operate, several different realms we operate in, uh, which I certainly described a few over, over some of the presentations. Uh, but just to go through and, uh, a few of our highlights are, uh, one, one grant we received earlier this year was for the Triple E Program, uh, in mosquito control. And so, that's meant to be complimentary to certainly, um, you know, the, the control that's already done in the county. Uh, so this grant was from Senator Ritchie's office and, uh, it was meant to, uh, it was actually a multi-county grant. And so, for five counties, we administered the funds to, uh, to not only purchase the mosquito dump kits that were distributed in each of those counties, as well as in our, um, in our county through all of it. We made sure that those got to all, all the towns, all the villages, uh, even the cities and, uh, and anyone else that they asked for them, they were made available at our office as well. And those were meant for the public to control, uh, you know, on a small scale, not for the public to control mosquitoes. And in this grant, we also have monies to, uh, for spraying. Uh, it's essentially just, it's not, not through our office, obviously, uh, as through the health departments of, of each individual counties. Uh, there's only two counties that, that do that, uh, between Hunter Dog and County, uh, Sued County. And I guess on a, on a very small scale, Madison County as well, so it's had some time. Uh, but in the, in the last couple of years, it's been those two counties primarily. And we do have monies to reimburse, uh, reimburse them for those expenses. So, we'll be taking care of that in the next, uh, next couple of weeks. Um, we, uh, we also had, uh, the, uh, so just some, some general technical assistance. And that was, we had a, a lot of business this year, especially of water quality. Um, as far as, that can be any technical assistance from erosion control, erosion incentive control to, um, to flooding, pond assistance and things of that nature. Uh, lots of business with that, uh, obviously with the, with the high waters of Lake Ontario. Uh, but more so just, um, you know, in general flooding or drainage issues that we've had because of, uh, you know, increased intensity of storms, increased frequency. And, you know, it's just a common story that, you know, this erosion started three or four years ago. And, you know, if I've lived here for twenty years, I haven't seen it this bad. And, and so, we're giving, you know, assistance in culvert insulation or things of that nature. So, that certainly has increased towards, uh, I believe this year, or over the past couple of years at least.
So, when you say assistance in that, what does, what does that assistance look like? Are you out there with a, you know, a backend loader if you need to be or?
No, I mean, that's the, obviously, there's, it's a, the, the one main question is, "Do you have any money for that?" And it's, uh, you know, it, it's simply no. Uh, but we can get on the assistance as far as if there are permit involved, where do you go for that? Uh, here's a, we do have a list of contractors and things of that, that nature. And then obviously, the technical assistance about, uh, you know, are you, uh, what kind of project do you, do you wanna do? How much, you know, money do you have available? And I try to work with them to, uh, you know, to fix the problem. Where, a lot of times, where is the root of the problem too? And so, we try to look for that. We have obviously mapping capabilities and, uh, and try to figure out what, uh, what is causing it. So, we can work, we've worked with municipalities all the way down to the single, you know, homeowners for that. Uh, also, uh, forestry advice. We work with, you know, large-scale landowners as to offer, uh, primary, you know, assistance on proper, uh, forestry techniques, best man, best, uh, you know, management practices as far as water quality is concerned. Uh, we have, we are in the process of writing five or six forest management plans this year, anywhere from smaller properties to large, you know, properties associated with a farm or, or very large winter properties. So, so we pay, uh, quite a bit of, uh, you know, of, uh, participation, uh, you know, from, from forest landowners this year. And then just, uh, assistance as far as diseased trees, uh, marketing assistance, things of that nature. As far as the disease and insects, that, uh, was unique this year, I, I believe, just because of the cold, uh, wet spring that really breeds fungal diseases, some of the things that I, I've really never seen in my career as, you know, as the first time, or at least not, not very prevalent this year. They seem to be quite prevalent. Um, we also have, um, Steve, the, uh, one thing that is, uh, that does happen to be coming up is, uh, the Conservation Field Day that our, our staff is, um, our, our office is responsible for. Uh, that's, uh, several hundred fifth grade students that go to Selkirk Shores. Uh, Erica Schreiner is coordinator of that program. And Steve, just wanted to remind you that we'll be sending out an invite, uh, within the next week or so or by the end of the week or in early next week, uh, in regards to, uh, attending that. It's something that legislature, you're, you're welcome to, uh, walk around, uh, you know, certainly take in, in the sights. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a program meant to educate youth, you know, fifth graders. And they attend several different, uh, stations, about five stations in a day. Then meant to introduce them to everything from, uh, um, from forestry, wildlife, uh, hunting, fishing, things of that nature, uh, anything conservation-related. And, uh, it's, it's quite a program, quite a sight to see. So, certainly encourage you to, to attend that if you're able to. Uh, in regards to our invasive species, uh, certainly a big one for us. Um, we have three main ones that we worked on this year. The, the one primary one is giant hogweed. We, we have about sixty sites in the, uh, in the county that we work on with the DC in conjunction with them. Uh, they, they do help us manage the database, but then we do have to do, uh, certainly the, the, uh, the research work on updating landowners, phone numbers, things of that, that nature, maintaining, uh, contact with them and maintaining permission under their property to be able to treat these. So, about forty, forty-five sites, uh, actually had hogweed this year on them. Um, sixty, although the other ones are still monitored, so we do need to check those out. And we really increased our mapping on those this year. We had some extra, uh, we did have an extra staff person here this year, temporary, on temporary terms. And, uh, was a huge help, uh, assisting us with mapping where these, uh, where these weeds are, even marking some of the locations. So, I think we had, uh, you know, better control than we have, had in the past. And, uh, they, they did need, I think, the last time I reported, we went through our first initial application and, uh, we did have to have to go back a second time. And we may be, may adding some different techniques to that, that program next year, but certainly looking forward to, you know, different controlling than this year. Uh, but it, in places, it certainly is, it's, uh, become, you know, I do believe it's, it's effective. We're seeing some of the plant numbers drop on some of the larger, larger infestations. But also, uh, we have, I believe, last year upwards of fifteen were taken from the, uh, uh, active list to the inactive list. So, and unfortunately, every year you get new, new sites, you know, coming in, but it's, it's, uh, it's definitely keeping it, you know, keeping it under control.
True. Is it designed utilizing the county planning books with the GAS?
Uh, I think we do have our own system. Uh, I have in the past, I, you know, certainly work, work with them for certain maps, like large-scale maps. But on a small, you know, um, as far as, you know, working with individual, uh, properties, we do work with real property to get the, uh, the tax parcel information. But we do have our own, uh, ArcMap GAS at, uh, at the office.
I believe that, um, the software we have would have the capabilities of handling that all in one.
We actually, um, partnered a few years ago on, uh, the field hardware to be able to go out and gather the data to map these things. So, uh, Joe's office, our office and Highway all kicked in some money together so that we could get the software and the field hardware to be able to do that kind of field work.
Sure.
Absolutely. We, we said same GAS today. I mean, they're, you know, obviously, in the purpose, more than welcome to borrow it.
I just recently said in training within the software we have. I just recently said in training within the software we have, I mean, there's the ability to change this. We do have to buy multiple parts.
If you can identify, you can probably do that.
Yeah.
And so that was certainly a successful program for us. Another one is invasive that's found in Salt Lake. And so far, it's only been found in that area. We treated about 24 acres of that infestation this year. And upon, you know, review of that, it looked to be quite successful, which is great. And the reason we were entering that lake and treating that is to keep it out of Nida Lake. It's about 43 miles from Salt to Nida. However, if it did, it can actually regenerate by fragmentation. So only a part of that plant is needed to regrow an entire population. And that weed can grow so dense, it really can have quite the ecological impact, also economic recreational. And have quite an impact on habitats. So we do keep that control. That may, it'll have, it will may continue next year, but it'd be on a much smaller scale, which is certainly speaks to our success of the treatment, which is great. The second, the second aquatic invasive that we worked on is water chestnut, certainly a big one for this county. We do have quite a population in Oswego River and in several other locations. So this year, we're sort of, we're two-pronged as far as the approach with water chestnuts. So we do one, we herbicide, we're working out about 110 acres this year, ranging from Oswego Ox Creek all the way up to Minnetonka, several larger infestations. And those are added density where that, that is an appropriate approach for us. So we go through the permitting process, work with a qualified applicator. And that was underway in late July. And I know some of that, we're often questioned why we wait, you know, so late, things of that nature. Actually, the weed itself is not on the surface until after, late June, I would say. And you actually need to have it at a sufficient density as it's top of the treatment. So that doesn't occur until late July. And then the seeds mature and fall off by mid to late August. So we only have a very brief window in there, maybe three, three weeks to do that. And so, and with permitting requirements, it actually takes about four months to do so. So even if you find an area that does need it in July, unfortunately, you have to wait until next year because it takes such a rigorous permitting process. And even at that, even after it's in hand, you still have to actually make a notification with the D E C about a week in advance of application. So there's a lot of rules and regulations associated with that, certainly follow that to the letter of the law. And that does, you know, certainly enhances our ability to act quickly. So it is quite a process and all. The other, other aspect of that program is the handling. And now this one, I think it was quite successful this year. We hired seven college interns, primarily from E S F, but also from SUNY Oswego. We did have one student from there as well. They actually, they use canoes to access the population. We have them do quite a bit of survey work, some mapping work. They have, you know, the skills to get right on the G I S at our office and input data, take that to the field, integrate it with G I S and make maps, make some recommendations and things of that nature. So they were quite a group this year. I think that it really gives them, you know, a pretty good stepping stone into other jobs from here in the natural resource world at least. And this year, they utilized this equipment to actually remove 33,000 pounds of water chestnuts. It was, you know, quite successful. That's just from a couple of years ago. That's, you know, actually more than doubled what they were able to take out. And I do have this short, this really brief two-minute video to show you this, you know, this activity this year. And we do have, we do have the opportunity, perhaps next year, we purchase some equipment. We may revamp some of our equipment and we usually use canoes. We may add some small john boats this year or next year. And we actually have a cutter to perhaps to cut the weed before we take those off, maybe do some rain work, really increase the amount that we get. We have to obviously grow a little bit bigger in equipment, but that's, we're on the cusp of that. If it doesn't happen next year, perhaps we'll test the equipment, obviously how it works. And hopefully the next few years, maybe if we get that up a little bit. But at any rate, I'd just like to show you this video quickly and I think you'll enjoy it.
No jet skis yet?
No, not yet.
We monitor the water chestnuts and their densities using the GPS in order to compare them to previous. To prevent the spread of water chestnut, we rip off the rosette for the rest of the stem. That's where the D E C is.
How do you dispose of them after?
We take them to the landfill, for instance, sort of our office, and they're capital students. Which after, after they dry up, I'm sure that the weight's certainly not that much. Probably gonna tend to, but she actually pulled them. So, but it's, you know, certainly a good thing that they did a great job this year for us to have. And certainly thankful for the fun, you know.
So are they employed through county monies, through a grant, through a special program?
So we use, right now, we're using two pots of funds for that program. And one is federal, that's under the G L R I, funding through the Fish and Wildlife Service. And the other one comes from, it's still monies that we had available from Senator Ritchie's office that comes through the New York City D E C. So we're using both of those pots of funds. But unfortunately, we have enough to get through the next year. After that, we had, actually, both of those pots of funds have actually dried up. So we won't have that same level of funding after about a year and a half, two years. But we're trying right now, certainly looking for it and, you know, making contact that needed. But we also have to switch another pot of funds in the next year.
It doesn't seem like it's, I mean, the computer side of this, but is this something where you could utilize, like a pair of core volunteers or something like that, if you got to that point? Or is it, I don't know how expensive?
Potentially. I know we've always focused on these folks, you know, that just get, you know, individuals, obviously with an interest or a background in natural resources. But yeah, absolutely. I think we may need to look at the program as a whole and explore other options.
I have this question.
You know, we often hear how difficult some state regulations are to define. Can you explain the permitting process and how your perception is difficult to get through this? You know, we got funding coming from Senator Ritchie's office on one hand, but I'm wondering how much of a barrier you're running up against time-wise for the regulations?
It's possible. I know, just being with, you know, with our end, we obviously have to get the bid out, the bid has to be approved by our board. And we have monthly board meetings, so you have, you know, one constraint there. As far as the state, it's possible. And it just, they have so much of a review that they have to do. There's work that the applicator has to do, they have a modeling program, they have to put this treatment through, which takes some time, and that all this information has to get to, you know, to the state. It is, yeah, absolutely. It's just for whatever, you know, it's a long process, a notification process, which is mandatory 21 days, there's a comment period and things of that nature. So it's, you know, it's just something that unfortunately, that's just what, you know, usually when we get it, we're handed it in July. It's primarily the, you know, like I said, there's not one, unfortunately, there won't ever be one where you can act in the same summer. But there is the possibility maybe to get it out a little bit earlier, but you are notifying the public. So it's only so early in the, you know, early in the year you can do it. But also it's the biology of the plant too, which is why we would need to, we really can't do it any earlier than we are doing it just because of, you want this application.
I'm just wondering, is there an easier way and starts in paperwork?
It certainly, certainly be great. Not that I've found it's always, you know, the same, you know, the same every year. And it's obviously the same, you know, for everyone to, if you want, yes, you know. Absolutely.
I was just wondering about, a little bit about the plant itself. So the mature seed is in the ground that is allowing that then to go to the surface. What happens to that mature seed?
So the seed is, that's, that's the difficult part of control, isn't it? It's good, and it can be viable in the sediment for 10 to 12 years. So if everything comes together, perfect weather, water level, water temperature. It was a great seed year, that particular year, all of a sudden that can sprout. And it could have, you know, looked like it was in great control. And all of a sudden, you can have a difficulty.
Now, is it just one time that it sprouts? Or is that seed, it will generate something?
The one seed itself, but unfortunately, there's multiple seeds in that one rosette.
Right, right. But I mean, that one seed, it only gets a one-time shot, then it's gone.
Correct.
Okay.
But unfortunately, when you have a, you know, a very dense population, it's quite a seed bank to build up.
Yeah, no, I realize. I'm just kind of curious if that little bugger can just keep coming and coming and coming.
Just the one, but I think there's a lot.
But that's enough, that's enough.
But I'm just curious. Keep coming, absolutely. Just a couple, one other thing in reference to our reforestation properties. We're certainly looking at planning for the timber sale this year. We always do, we have, for those of you who don't know, we have 2,200 acres of public lands that the county, that the county does own. And right now, like I said, just planning for that timber sale. We did have one, and it was harvested earlier in the year and it was too late. And the, at least, or too, I guess, too wet to be cleaned up. So what we do as far as the cleanup, we work with the logging contractor and we do require that they have a bulldozer. And as we work with the contractor to get the trails leveled properly to facilitate drainage, the log landings, all, you know, everything, everything leveled and in properly shape and any best management practices installed or taken out as needed. And then that contractor leaves, we're able to release their, we do hold a performance bond to ensure that that work is done. So we're also working on the boundary lines this summer. We've done quite a few, quite a few different boundary lines, just writing those up and painting those, making sure that we avoid any timber stuff and things of that nature. And one last aspect that we're working on is just planning on, as far as the boundaries, we've always put, you know, installed signs. Those are, you know, certainly have some vandalism, you know, signs come down as far as weather or damage and other ways. And so we're actually working on maybe a new design that we'll bring to the committee. Maybe a bit smaller sign, maybe it's a little more weather resistant and things of that nature. So we'll be looking at that and probably in the winter months, come into the committee with those. So we want to be able to put them up next year and give those purchase.
That's great. Is there anything else? Joe, anything?
No, this separate topic.
Okay, Joe, thank you very much again. I want to echo that, we appreciate everything you do and your updates are always insightful. You don't quite bring as much show and tell as Eric, but excellent information. And it's, you know, especially for legislators and those who've been here a few years, it's always cool to hear that, you know, really interesting stuff that we do. A lot of times, we've never even known, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
A well-kept secret that we need to do a better job of sharing, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
The workforce, we're going to be a more great communities project. As we head up our C C C is moving forward. And I plan to try to disseminate some information to all legislators about, we need to get 53 employers on board with the project. This is the program, there are three different assessments. There's a P A P, English, and an interpretation of documents type of assessment. But you get a personal profile about, you know, what you're good at, what you know with this. And they're giving it to all of their students now in C C C. It's free to take the test now through C C C, I believe, for a while. So we have a grant for that. And they're, I know that they're starting to work more, they're working with P C A P students as well. I think that, you know, one of my friends' son is in it. He started in the first year, so I guess he's in the 10th grade now. He took it when his parents were old, you know, so on this, so it pumped him up for, you know, what he has potential for. And so what we want to try to do is disseminate some information to more legislators about how to take the test, where to take the assessments. There's going to be six locations across the county. Eventually, there's going to be a ban that's going to be global. So we're going to be able to take, provide the assessments in local locations throughout the county. And the more employers that know or accept and acknowledge that they can use these profiles for hiring. I think already Novellus and Blue Mackey and Fulton Boiler are some of the bigger companies that have already are signed on. But they're finding that it's saving them money in training and losing people. It helps with having employees that they already know have soft skills, capabilities. Because some of this testing involves, you know, what people know about basic responsibilities and how to get along in a whole place. So there's already been some good successes. So the big, what we need to do is, what we're going to need from legislators is, you know, not only to let, you know, friends, family, and constituents, kids, know about the availability of the assessments for free while they're available, but also to try to talk to some of the employers in your communities to get them to sign on. And it's really easy to sign on, there's no cost. You're basically just, you do have to go on the website and sign up and say, we acknowledge it. You don't necessarily have to use it, but there are some employers that are actually providing preference to people that have taken the assessments. And I think it's going to be proven that it's going to help them in a lot of ways. And they can actually go on and get, see, there's a database, a national database of profiles of, you know, so this is what a profile looks like for, you know, someone who would be a good social worker. This is what a profile looks like for someone who would be a good, you know, tradesman or, you know, computer-aided designer or something like that. So I'll try to get that information to you guys first and then also get it out to the rest of the regents.
You said getting the test is free time, meaning where will that funding eventually?
I think it's gonna, it will be gone when it dries up. I think there's about $90,000, $90,000 dollars to do, to do the assessments. It costs $36 for the three assessments, so like $12, it takes 55 minutes. But it, for young people, I think it shows, it demonstrates for them. And the reason that they're doing it at the college for college freshmen is to say, this can help you think about where you want to be, or what you're already good at, where you can ask for. If you're going for something that you're not that good at, you know, you know that's a place where you really got to concentrate and pump up. Because you can take it more than once. I don't know if they'll pay for it more than once. The other, the first pilot that they did through our workforce, the old unemployment officer, one staff. So they had a bunch of, like eight people sign up to take it. And seven of them did quite well. did quite well, a couple of them scored gold and platinum. One of them didn't do well and they put her into a, a training type of program to be able to take it again. So, but it's giving people, you know, confidence about what they can do and it gives them something, you know, once they finish it, they get a document that says you are, you know, bronze or gold or platinum, whatever, and you can take that in and then you can actually provide your personal profile to, to an employer.
Actually, some of the schools, high schools, I understand.
We're trying to get the high schools to do it. I know, I know it's happening at city, I know at least for sure it's happening at P tech. I don't know.
Well, I guess this is new, new this year is that the, the state is allowing for this work keys, as you mentioned, to be part of that form plus one that high schools require in order to graduate and this can satisfy the plus one piece or a piece which is, I think it's real great news as well.
So I just wanted the folks on the committee to know, to know about that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking very much forward to that, getting out there because we've got a lot of industry and a lot of people that, when you know what you're, what you're good at, what you need helping, you need to know that.
Well, we also, our, our employers know that they're, they have some difficulties selling certain types of positions and I think this could help from both sides. If we have more local employers signing on and accepting this and we have more young people taking the assessments, you know, they might be starting to mold their education, you know, and especially with the CCC style, these like mini courses, they're not full degree programs where you take, you know, a six month program and you've got an advanced manufacturing diploma. These people are walking straight into jobs.
Stacy needs to be able to do that too with D S S. That's exactly where that should be.
There.
Okay. She's very well aware.
Oh, yeah.
And thank you for indulging me.
I think that's great information. Anybody who's, he's more involved on that than Steve Roy or Arlette, that's definitely true. She is actively looking for employers to sign up.
I'll disseminate some, you know, places where you can learn more about her as well.
Okay, great. Anything else before we close it out? Two quick things, the Alliance for Economic Conclusion Grant is on the street, the R P is out. Anybody who you know locally who may be interested in checking that out, a link to that information is on our county website. So pass that around for anyone who's interested. That closes in two weeks, I think, so it's a pretty quick.
You have the R P, R P is actually.
The R P is on the website. And then secondly, as a local fisherman, I'm very excited that the salmon have started to come up the streams. They're being caught pretty actively in the.
I do have a new fishing pole.
I do have a new fishing pole. Very excited about when they come into Swiggo. They are actively coming up the salmon river and I heard rumor of a few in the Swiggo River at the end. Little plug in there, it looks like the water is actually going to be good this year. So that's accurate. If nothing else, for the, right, and seconded by Roy, all day.